Done a, we've already done a moment of silence and it salutes the flag. So I'd like to open this workshop to continue discussion regarding proposed amendments to the zoning district use table to amend permitted uses for solar energy systems throughout the town of Hopkinton and to possibly change and/or amend the review and approval procedures for all solar energy systems within the town of Hopkinton as submitted by Peter Squares Esquire.
Yeah, no, we need a motion to close the executive session and a motion to seal the executive session.
You are correct, Scott. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the executive session be closed. Scott Bill Hirst.
We've already closed the executive session. We're going to reconvene in open session.
Okay, I'm sorry. Scott Bill Hirst, I move that we convene in open session.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye. Scott Bill Hirst, aye.
Motion passes. I'd like to make a statement.
Okay, I can make a motion. Mr. President, I make a motion that we seal the minutes of the executive session. Scott Bill Hirst.
Do I have a second?
You need to have the statement first.
Okay. I'm making a statement to Council President that no votes were taken in an executive session. Do I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
Scott Bill Hirst, so moved. Second.
All in favor?
Scott Bill Hirst, aye.
Moffett, aye. Motion passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I thought we just did.
I make a motion to adjourn the executive session.
Scott Bill Hirst, second. I thought we just did that, but what else?
All in favor?
Scott Bill Hirst, aye.
Moffett, aye. And just to clarify, Scott, we, your motion was to seal the minutes. It wasn't to adjourn.
I stand corrected. Scott Bill Hirst, I stand corrected.
All right, moving forward. I'd like to open a workshop to continue discussions regarding proposed amendments to the zoning district use table to amend permitted uses for solar energy systems throughout the town of Hopkinton and to possibly change and to amend the review and approval procedures for all solar energy systems within the town of Hopkinton as submitted by Peter Squares Esquire on behalf of his clients, Dr. Tom and Cynthia Skolko, including but not limited to discussions regarding potential impacts to the photovoltaic solar energy ordinance and the farm-based photovoltaic solar energy systems ordinance. All right, so we have a presentation for whose zoning amendments, any additions or deletions. Is Attorney Squares in the audience today?
I am.
Excellent, thank you. Did you want to open up with anything? Did you have any comments or anything before we move forward?
Sorry about that. I just had a little glitch with my computer, but, no, I think we had a very thorough, a very thorough discussion the last time. I would note that there was a request at the last workshop that we submit a table with a side-by-side comparison of what's new in this ordinance and what's remaining from the old ordinance. We did, Eric Bibler of the Hopkinton Citizens Alliance did draft something on that and submit it. Other than that, at this point, I think that in order to take the ordinance and, you know, make it your own and get a second set of eyes on it, it's going to need to get reviewed by your solicitor's office. I know that you have a very capable solicitor that can take a look at what I've submitted and tweak it and make it better and make it the product that you'd want. So I'd be available to answer any other questions, but that's the course that I would propose for the ordinance moving forward.
Excellent, thank you very much. So with that being said, I would like to hear, tonight, I'd like to hear further comments from the town councilors, our planner if he is in attendance tonight, any planning board members, any zoning board members, and obviously the public, but I would like to begin with our town council. I'd like, we'd like to give the public an idea of where we stand regarding the framework of this proposed motion. So my question to the fellow councilors would be, do you feel as a council that this proposed amendment is an opportunity for much-needed improvements? I will state now that I personally do believe that, and again, I will ask everyone to please respect each other and that this workshop is so that all opinions and concerns can be expressed. Do any councilors right now have any comments, concerns, or questions before I open up to anyone else?
No, I would just, Scott Bill Hirst, I do have a couple of concerns, and as a courtesy, I sponsored this. Number one, in 2019, I was part of the council and we voted to update solar issues in ordinance. We, there is apparently a serious concern about the impact on the farm viability ordinance with this proposed ordinance, and I'm going to try to keep an open mind. It's pretty complex. My goal for this community is that we have a community of people of all income levels, old timers and new arrivals in a town that people can afford to live, and I am concerned about, you know, solar being out of control, but I also want people to have a reasonable use of their property, and I know I'm not a lawyer, but I do know in law, there's things called taking, where you restrict people so much, there's a legal impediment to it, and I'm going to be asking the attorney, so I will give them a heads-up now, if there's any concerns legally about any of these proposals, if they were adopted, would it constitute a taking under law? And I'd be interested in that. And I'm basically going to refrain from commenting and listen to what's said and think that, and the council will be deliberating, and we can share our perspectives at that time, but that's where I'm thinking right now. But in a gesture of working with people and, because the reason I sponsored it is nobody, we couldn't even discuss this thing unless a councilor sponsored it. I know Attorney Squares contacted Councilor Davis and I, and I responded, and I don't know, I probably responded before Councilor Davis had a chance to read it, but I believe that our responsibility as members of the town council is making people participation in their local government valued and try to reduce the mechanical barriers of them participating in their local government. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. I just want to add one thing before we move forward. I just want, I don't want to lose track of the framework of this proposed amendment, meaning, you know, the meat and potatoes of this whole thing and why it's proposed. I understand, you know, there's a lot of concern, rightfully so, about the farm viability ordinance, but all these can be, all these things can be discussed. I do not want to lose track of, you know, what, again, the framework of this ordinance means for the town of Hopkinton and protecting, you know, protecting what we have. So Council Gary, do you have any comments?
I sure do. Thank you, Mr. President. All right. I think we all can pretty much agree that some of this needs to be written on bigger solar, some of the time, some of the things are in it. I'm going to throw out some numbers here. In Hopkinton, there's 1,856 acres of farms. In Hopkinton, there is 4,560 acres of forestry. On the 1,856 acres of farms, there are seven farms that have one acre of solar and one that has two acres of solar. So in the comparison of what has been built in the last couple of years, that's not a lot, as far as that goes with solar. I think we definitely need to take a look at the Farm Viability Act, because the way it's written now, with ground-mounted solar being eliminated, that kind of ties the farmer's hands. And just in that alone, to do, to do solar, it's about 20 panels, which equals about 800 pounds. As you go farther down, it's 2,000 panels per acre. So a lot of that would not be able to fit on a barn outbuilding, or as I said the last time, a greenhouse or a hothouse, as you would. But I would be interested with the rest of the councilors and our solicitor and sit down and see if we all can come to a happy medium with this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mike. Sharon Davis, do you have anything to add or questions, concerns, or comments?
On the farm viability ordinance or the whole?
I would say, I, let's, I would say, starting off on the, on the main ordinance, that's, that's the meat and potatoes. I really, truly believe that the farm viability can be discussed. I think it was struck from this ordinance for the sole fact that it lacks any type of, you know, direction or anything else. It's almost like it was just plopped in there. I think it needs to be talked about, but again, as Attorney Squares said, this isn't going to be the, you know, the straw that breaks the camel's back. It just needs to be, you know, why we're here, it's the main ordinance, it's what affects the whole town of Hopkinton. The farm viability ordinance is important, but again, out of the X amount of pages, it's one paragraph, but we can discuss this. I mean, it's, I mean, I'm sure there's, we have a larger audience tonight, I'm sure we're going to get feedback from it. I look forward to hearing that. So at your pleasure, you know, whatever you want to talk about, it's your floor.
All right. All right. I did ask for the comparison, and I'd like to go through the comparison.
Absolutely.
If that's okay. All right?
That's why we're here. Yep, go ahead.
So if you look at, it's Section 5.3.2, and if you look at page four, under Section B1, Minor Systems, it says, "Any application that requires further relief from the zoning board or town council must follow the precedent of approval set forth in Rhode Island General Law 452361 and Hopkinton Town Ordinance." And it is basically saying that, I think that's where it is, that the planning board gets to do things before the town council. And I just want to make sure, that's why I wanted to have the new solicitors, I want their opinion on that. They don't have to give it tonight, obviously, but I want, I want their opinion on that. The same thing under B2, Major Systems, the same law. And under B3, it says in this comparison that the planning board chair has suggested that requiring compliance via original approval process under proposed ordinance may be too strict. I'd like to have Al Diorio to weigh in on that. It doesn't have to be tonight, but I'm just telling you, these are the things that I, these are my questions. Under, on page six, under C, actually, you didn't put that on there, but the ordinance says, under 5.32C, says, "Solar is not allowed on conservation easement or sold development rights land." I would like to have that explained more by Mr. Squartz, what he means by that. Under 533B, where it says, "Accessory solar systems in residential zones shall be roof-mounted only." I'm still, I still am going to question, is it possible to have what I tried to describe as a pole, looks like a tree with like solar on either side of that pole, sort of like a tree of panels, because some people, their roof is not, you know, it may be older or historic property, and some people just may not want to have roof-mounted solar, but they want solar to help them with their energy costs. And so, one way could be a pole, kind of where solar is mounted like a Christmas tree. I just want to know if that's a possibility. I'm just bringing it up for people to think about. Number C, 533, number C, it says, "Solar canopy systems greater than 1,750 square feet are," no, I'm sorry, I'm under, still under B, where roof-mounted. My other question is about the parking lots. How many parking lots in Hopkinton could canopy solar applications apply? I don't, I don't know that we have that many, so it's something to investigate. Let's see.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Scott.
Scott Bill Hirst, I just have a question of the town clerk. I had brought up, having input from the fire district, said, "Were you received any response from either the Ashway Fire District or the Hope Valley Wyoming Fire District on any input on the, this ordinance or any of the background on it in regard to fire protection or concerns?"
Well, I sent it to them on the 15th, and I heard nothing back.
Thank you. I didn't think you did, but I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
All right. Can I go on?
You can. Go ahead, Sharon.
Under, under Section 534, under, in the Bs, it says, "The proposed ordinance is specifying that decommissioning includes cost of recycling but no credit for salvage," and it says, "Should add decommissioning estimate to be verified by engineer designated by the planning board." So that's, I just want to make sure that we discuss that.
Sharon, which section was that? Do you mind repeating that?
That is 5.3.4, under B8.
I see it. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, on page nine, it's on page nine.
Thank you.
Okay. So just to make sure, do we talk about what's, that there, it says something about "Should add decommissioning estimate to be verified by engineer," so, and the fact that it does not, you don't get credit for salvage. I think that those are important points to discuss. And on page 10, A1, it talks about lean against the property.
Sharon, what page was that?
Page 10. Section 535, A1, it's talking about no credit for salvage value, and then it says, "Town lean against underlying property to cover any shortfall in the reserve." And that's where it says "should add." That "should add," that was in red, so I don't know if that was part of Mr. Schwartz's, if it's part of the proposal or if it's something that either maybe Eric or somebody thought about after the fact, but they wanted that thing added, that decommissioning estimate.
I mentioned that myself, Scott Bill Hirst. I mentioned the lean.
Sure. Sharon, hold on one second. Attorney Squares, are you taking notes here or would you like to respond to these as they come through? I'm not sure if...
I can, I can respond however you'd like. I guess I just know as far as the lean comment, that wasn't included in the original draft that we submitted, but that was, Councilman Hurst did make that comment at the last workshop, and, you know, we thought that was a good idea, so, where it said, you know, that's just to note that that's something that could be added.
Okay. And, let's see, under, now I'm on page 12, which is Section 5.3.6, and it would be A8, but it says, it says, about the tree, I think the tree permits required for removal of trees on town right away, and that the proposed ordinance does not set a standard for rezoned property. I think I wanted to ask about the town solicitor, if they, if they agree that the proposed ordinance doesn't set a standard for rezoned property. Let's see. A10, where it says, "No building permit issued until notice provided by town planner to town building officials in writing that all applicable approvals have been received and all applicable requirements have been met." And in the past, if Jim Lanfor is there, the way, the current PSES is written, it's requiring, I think it's even requiring National Grid to sign off on it, and there are certain things that you can't sign off on until the project's totally built. So, you know, we need to, it's sort of like, which came first, the chicken or the egg? I think that it's going to be difficult to make that, for him to put that in writing before the building permit is issued. I don't, you know, I'm not sure that that can happen, but it just needs to be reviewed again.
Okay, Sharon, I think there, they're just, I mean, and I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's just saying that as long as, as long as all applicable approvals have not, you know, and all applicable requirements have not been met, that no building permit should be issued. So I think that's long before it would be handed over to National Grid.
No, no, but what I'm, not really. I think if you, I don't know if Jim Lanfor is out there, but the fact that he's given verbal approval instead of written approval, I think there is also a possibility that there's certain things that the old PSEs required, that it can't, you can't do it until the thing is almost built. But anyway, I might be wrong. I might be wrong. I just want to look at that again.
Sure. Noted.
And then, B, on page 13, B2, "Location of major and minor solar energy systems on prime farmland is prohibited." And I guess, what's the definition of prime farmland versus the farm viability ordinance? You know, what did they describe is in the farm viability ordinance? I don't know what the words "prime farmland" is, is the question, that definition. I need to know what that is. Okay, so now I'm on page 14. B8 says, "Any proposed access drives require issuance of physical alteration permit from the town of Hopkinton or Rido, depending on the roadway." And the town planner says, "We don't have that process today." So my question is, why was this put in? So that's a Swartz question. I'm not saying it's a bad idea or anything, I just, if we don't do it now, you know, why, why, and where did it come from, is my question.
Would you like me to answer that?
I have a couple more, and then I'll be done. Okay. The next, page 15, under B13, it says, "Upon approval, the planning board shall set a date for decommissioning, which date may only be extended by further approval of the planning board. If the decommissioning is not completed within 180 days of termination or abandonment, the town of Hopkinton shall have the authority, after further notice, to enter the property and decommission the solar system." And my question is, what happens if the town tries to decommission and the actual cost exceeds the decommissioning bond? You know, how can landowners be made to make up the difference? That's a question worth thinking about. And then, it says, and then if you go to 5.3.7A, which is that last thing on page 15, under the present ordinance, it says, "PSES also provides town council with illegal authority to step in front of planning board to spot zone, RFR 80, property for solar." And I just, again, that, I really want the new solicitors to give me their opinion once and for all. Is the planning, should the planning board be doing things before the town council gets involved or not? Because obviously, we have done it the other way. And I just, I want to know what's the true interpretation of the statutes and the ordinances. I don't like the, you know, one person says, "Oh, it goes this way," and another person says, "Oh, it goes that way." And I just want to know for sure, the proper procedure. And that, I mean, if we're going to change it, we might as well get it right. On the next page, 16, when you're talking about contaminated solar sites, the question is, can we identify all potential contaminated sites now and consider maybe listing them in this ordinance as exceptions or whatever? I'm not sure if what he wrote, if what we wrote here does give us the ability to do Stub Town Road, and are we opening our, you know, I want to know what, how many other contaminated sites are out there.
Any comment?
Go ahead, Scott.
Scott Bill Hirst, my concern is in contaminated, and I know a lot of people will argue what's contaminated, but places that could be, and they might not be necessarily deimproved, you might have to have the DM prove it, but former junkyards, I think of Depot Road where they did reject, the previous councils had rejected solar there, that known landfill or dump in the past. We do have up on Conacher Road, the Stub Town Road, off Conacher Road, the latest landfill. So they're out there, known by a lot of the older residents in town, and it's all in what the definition is, but I would imagine any place that there was a junkyard or a landfill and... But I would imagine any place that there was a junkyard or a landfill, a known landfill. I know there was one in Bank Street in Old Valley many, many years ago, I've heard people talk about it. So all these things will come into play if, uh, whatever type of development they want to put there because it's limited.
Scott, the reason I'm asking that question is, is because the last time you mentioned Old Depot Road, and we fought against Old Depot Road. I don't want it coming back because it's a contaminated site by definition. So I think we need to know what our exposure would be to, um, allowing contaminated sites to be, uh, covered by solar. The other, my other point is, I think that, you know, we have, we have replaced our town's energy usage by the approved solar projects that are already out there. I don't think we need to make it easy for anybody else to, um, to get large, uh, solar projects. So I just think we need to really rethink that part and, and at least know what, figure out, have the list of contaminated sites and, and really know what our exposure is going to be for that. Okay, and I think that's, that's what I have for now.
Hey Sharon, Sharon, it's Mike. I am reading through, I'm reading through the, I can't talk with this thing on. I'm reading through the Town Viability Act that was adopted in 2003. And I'm also looking at Farm Viability Act that was adopted in the addendum 2016. Not once is the word prime farmland used in either or.
Okay.
So, not sure if that was just, uh, just, uh, was a cool word to use when they wrote that up, but there's nothing written in either or against either farm viability about that. But thank you for picking that up.
Okay, thank you.
Bob Marvel, do you have anything to add or any, any questions, concerns, comments before I open it up?
Yeah, I guess my comment is, I'm listening to the other, um, counselors discuss this. It seems to me that we are kind of diving into the weeds with a lot of questions and, um, you know, inability to understand things. And I'm looking at the, the draft ordinance and a lot of this stuff is kind of spelled out, um, the way I read it. Like, you know, contaminated site stuff is, is right in the definition. It defines, you know, that a contaminated site is, is something that's confirmed by RIDM, you know, et cetera. You know, I, I think that what we have to make sure that we don't lose sight of is the majority of this ordinance proposal is intended to do two things. Number one, as, as I read it, it's intended to, um, properly associate large scale or, or medium scale solar projects as manufacturing, as allowed in the manufacturing zone only by right. And, um, second of all, I think it allows us to be a lot more appropriate in the way we handle these projects in terms of process and procedure and who gets to review it. And, and, you know, whether we want to make it more difficult or less difficult, it, it really is kind of besides the point because we, we have to just have a proper process in order to, to look at these projects and assess them and assess the impacts. And I think that the, the majority of this proposal does that. Um, yes, we have to review it, we have to dig down into the, into the weeds and, and, you know, make adjustments. I've, I've seen a lot of emails even from, um, you know, from residents with a lot of very good, you know, recommendations for minor changes. Uh, we need to look at all of those. Yes, we need to, to really take a, a, a deep dive into the farm viability ordinance and how this has impacted because I think, you know, there's two sides to that story. And, and I, you know, been, been seeing a lot of, of, uh, you know, correspondence back and forth and I can see both sides. So we have to really discuss that. But I think, you know, to answer your original question, Steve, um, I think that this is, is worth going forward with. You know, digging down into the details, making the adjustments that we want and moving forward with it. That's my comment.
Thank you, Bob. I would like to agree with your sentiments there. I think, you know, the basic framework is going to put us in the right path to control the things that we feel we need to control. So with that being said, um, I would like to open it up to anyone, um, out, out there. See, one hand here, hold on. Go ahead, Eric. Eric?
Thank you, Eric Bibler here. Thanks for recognizing me. I, I just wanted to offer some comments, you know, as one of the proponents of the ordinance, you know, and kind of, I, I'm very, very glad to have heard, you know, Bob's comment just now, Bob Marvel's comment, because I think it really puts things into perspective. You know, I think, I think that, um, the thrust of this ordinance was a couple of things. From, in terms of the framework, you know, one of the major divisions here is to really clearly delineate, uh, commercial manufacturing uses from accessory uses. I mean, that's clearly a major division. So, um, commercial ground mounted, you know, major solar systems that cover acres. Um, we made the argument and cited the references that that's really a manufacturing process and we cited the Supreme Court precedents to you. Um, and we think that's the appropriate zoning. Um, and then we think that those projects should be, um, probably for the most part, regulated as major land, you know, under the major land subdivision regulations. Then there are lots of accessory uses that, you know, we all want to encourage. That would be, say, rooftop mounted. There are some parking lots, you know, in Hopkinton, I think, where canopies, rooftop canopies might be applicable. There aren't many, but, you know, other towns do have these provisions and we just thought it made sense to, you know, because we could to anticipate those things. One of the things that, um, in this initial draft, which is offered to you, the town council, you know, for your consideration, one of the things that was disqualified, just through discussion of, of a small group of people, but you might find differently, one of the things that was disqualified was, um, allowing ground mounted solar as an accessory use as opposed to panels on tops, the top of office buildings, let's say. And that was because the sense of this small group of people that we're talking about, it was that, um, you know, residents didn't particularly want to drive up to an office building and see, you know, ground mounted solar array as an accessory use when that could be on top of the building, right? But, but that's the major, that's a major breakpoint. And then, um, I think the main question for the council, I thought we had a very good meeting, uh, last, uh, last workshop. I think the, the first question for the council, in my opinion, right now is, do you want to invest the time to move forward with this framework, which, you know, attempted to identify, I don't know, 20, 25 shortcomings of the previous ordinance and try to rectify them and try to put together, you know, a more rational, robust framework for regulating all forms of solar? If you like the framework, I'm really talking about the framework of this one better than the prior ordinance, then I think you can go through this and find the pieces that you like and the pieces that you don't like. So, I mean, obviously there will be a discussion about farm viability and how to define a farm and what kind of commitment, you know, uh, those sorts of users ought to make and that sort of thing. But I think that's really where I would advise the council to try to get a sense of the council. Do you think this framework is an improvement? And do you want to move forward with it and try to use this framework to come up with the best ordinance that we can come up with? Because we think there are significant shortcomings in the existing ordinance. And we've said to you in prior correspondence, and any of you who have joined us and sitting through planning board meetings have, have watched developers over the past two and a half years exploit the weak, or, you know, two years, exploit the weaknesses, you know, in the, in the existing ordinance. And that's what we're trying to get away from. Another thing that Bob said, though, that I think was really important is, um, we're raising a lot of detailed questions tonight. Uh, maybe more detail in some instances than we want to get into. But some of these things are actually defined. So for example, in the, uh, draft ordinance in front of you, there's a reference to, uh, prime farmland. But in the ordinance, it does define that term. And it, 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 um, talks about prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance as determined by the US Department of Agricultural, Agriculture, Natural Resources Conservation Service or the Rhode Island Soil Survey. So, um, most, um, states, I would, I would say, um, around the country and just generally throughout the country, you know, discourage converting prime farmland to, you know, other uses like, like this, you know? So that was the reason for that. We were just trying to be consistent with, you know, with what you find in other places. There, there were a number of these, um, things that were raised. Leans is in here, I just want to mention that, um, under 5.3.5, which is under A1. And then again, repeated, that's for, no, I guess that's for major and minor land. That's all the language on decommissioning. And it did include a provision which Mr. Hurst and others had identified as something that they thought was a good idea. Says, to the extent that the financial guarantee is utilized for decommissioning, is utilized for decommissioning, the solar energy system, um, that the, I'm sorry, to the extent that the financial guarantee is utilized and does not cover the full cost of decommissioning, as a condition of approval, the owner of the real property on which the solar system is located shall agree to a lien to be placed on the real property in favor of the town. So we're basically saying, we did say in our decommissioning language that, um, that the owner of a solar system would, um, allow the town to take a lien on the land to cover any shortfall, you know, in the decommissioning reserve for these major projects. And, and, um, some of this stuff, some of this stuff, you know, is in here and, and defined. And, you know, to Sharon's point about the precedence of approvals, you know, I'll touch on that lightly. You know, I'm a plaintiff against the town and one of the central points in the, um, complaint against some of these prior approvals is that the town did not follow the precedence of approvals. Um, if you go back and look at the existing ordinance, um, well, first of all, the precedence of approvals language is, the actual statute is cited there. It's a Rhode Island general law and it's repeated in our own ordinances. But shockingly, our own existing solar ordinance, the PSES, suggests that these projects should go to the planning board for an advisory opinion and then they should go to the town council for rezoning. And then after they're rezoned, they should go back to the planning board for master plan approval. So we thought when we inserted this provision, in a way, it's sort of redundant and almost insulting because in the town ordinance here, the draft ordinance, it says the town's obligated to follow state law, which they haven't done in the past. But since the old ordinance explicitly prescribed a procedure that was contrary to our own town ordinance and our own state law, we thought that we should reverse that and just insert the language in this solar ordinance to make it clear that, you know, that was the proper procedure. I don't, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to settle a legal point here, but that's why that's in there. And, um, I do think you should consult your own council on that. But, um, it was just put in the ordinance so that it would be followed and not contradicted. But I, I, I hope, I sincerely hope that the town council will walk away from this draft for now and say, you know, this really accomplishes a lot of good things. Nothing gets passed unless we like it. You either reach a consensus or you get a majority vote in favor. And you have to work on different sections until you get there. And that's, that's pretty much what we're expecting. But we're spinning our wheels unless the council first sort of decides that they want to reject it entirely because the old one's good enough or better, or that you want to embrace this and try to work with it as a tool and, and make it what you want. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next up here with some questions, um, Joe, go ahead.
Hi, this is Joe Moreau from Old Depot Road. I just have a suggestion. And looking at the previous, uh, solar project, the developers and attorneys would normally provide documents associated with the project on the agenda. So for an example, 40 Maxon Hill Road, I was able to go back and look at four, five, six documents. And that raised some questions for me. I have not seen the side by side comparison that was recently completed. I can't look at the PSES for the current ordinance and I can't look at the proposed. Um, my point is, I believe it should be available to all residents that should have the information and not just a small group of people or wherever the information went out to. But I'm sitting here listening to, you know, a lot of good points that Sharon and Bob made, but I, I don't have the availability to go back unless I look at my hard copy to make an accurate comparison. I just think it's important for all the residents to have that information. And if it could be on the agenda, then it's up to us to take advantage of that. That's my only comment. One quick thing I do want to mention, uh, I just thought about this was, it's been mentioned a few times about the Old Depot Road and the proposal that was there. And they talk about a contaminated site. Either the attorney or developer during that process mentioned that it was a 40 acre contaminated site. Well, I went back and I looked at Hoffman Engineering, uh, information. In fact, on the record, I got the, uh, Hoffman Engineering to admit that it was really a two acre site and not 40 acres. So I agree with the comments that were made. If it's a contaminated site, I don't believe that there should be any disturbance of that land pounding, you know, into the ground with the sole source, aqua, fur and the wellhead protected areas. I just think we're asking for, uh, some problems with that issue, but that's it and thanks for your time.
Thank you, Joe. We'll try to work to get that out on the website so the public can have access to that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just think it's, uh, it's beneficial to everyone and, uh, thanks again.
Fair point, thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Chip Hales, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. Um, this is Chip Hale from 211 Chase Hill Road, National Way. I just want to say that, like, I agree with what Bob and Steve and Eric have been saying. I, I really, and I think everyone can agree that, um, we need, you know, this, this is a valuable exercise looking to revise the existing solar ordinances viable. One thing that I think we want to just keep really at the forefront of our minds when we look at this is some of the problems and some of the issues that existed with the prior ordinance. Particularly with the gray areas. I know I talk about this every time I come on here, that the gray areas are areas for anyone to exploit, whether it's a developer or, or anyone else in town. And, um, so I think we want to be very careful about the definitions that we use. And when, and I think Eric brought this up a little bit with the, with respect to the prime farmland or whatever. You know, we're, Hopkinton's not the first town that's had to come up with these definitions. These definitions have been made at the state level and sometimes at the federal level. So we should default to those definitions to ensure that we're in compliance with the state. But also what it does is it actually takes some of the responsibility off of the town council themselves, right? So if it's an unpopular decision, how you're characterized or how your activity is characterized, the town council can simply say, hey, this is a the town council can simply say, hey, this is a Rhode Island state definition, and we're obligated to follow it. And so I just think that's something we really want to keep in mind, and we want to be careful about sort of painting ourselves into a future corner. For instance, this is just one example, one particularly with the contaminated site word in this new one, wording of this new ordinance. It actually makes it sound to me that, you know, major, minor land development project approval is conditioned upon the following minimum requirements, then they list out A1 and A2 for the different type of, am I in the right, maybe I'm not in the right spot here? I don't remember where the contaminated site one is now. Dang, sorry, I lost it. But my, the point is, the point I'm trying to make is that I, part of me agrees with what Joe was saying, is that maybe contaminated sites should just be taken off the table. Maybe, maybe not. But I think that before we just say, because right off the bat, you know, intuitively we want to say, well, it's a contaminated site, so nobody's going to care if we develop, let's use our contaminated site to benefit the town and the potential owner or developer. But we do not want to make a situation where people start to use the by right terminology to say, well, we have a contaminated site, therefore, by rights, you know, when our site's been characterized as contaminated by RIDM, or it is in the process of that, and so by right, we're allowed to have solar. We absolutely do not want that sort of a situation. Now, I think it would be okay to have contaminated, our development on a contaminated site if the appropriate characterization of the type and level of that contamination is like very well-characterized. And in doing so, we characterize the potential risk level of doing any development at that site. And the reason I bring that up is there's some obvious contaminated sites that we wouldn't necessarily want to be developed, like Joe's saying, where the second you puncture the surface soil, you're now exposing whatever's buried beneath it to weathering and leaching through our groundwater and affecting any downstream well water or things like that. However, and I don't know the specific details or the specific spectrum of contaminated site classifications, but you could imagine that there might be a type of site that is technically contaminated but poses little or no risk through the development process. Okay, so again, sorry, I lost, I couldn't find the section it was in, but I think we just want to be, okay, we want to be very cognizant of the wording that we use so that we don't set up a situation where a developer can come in and say, ah, ah, by your own words and your ordinance, we can now by right do XYZ activity there. You know, I realize that landowner rights are important, things like that, I don't want to disparage those, but at the same time, I think we just want to be very aware of the wording that we use. And I, just a quick question, several people have been saying, oh, maybe now is not the time to get into the weeds on this, but I think now is the time to get into the weeds on this. And every time we have one of these workshops, even if it's bit by bit, someone happens to pull out a sentence that says, ah, this makes me feel uncomfortable, can we rephrase it or change it this way? I think that's something we want to do, because as people that have been, you know, struggling with this for the past few years, times ticking, right? Lives are being changed, community is being changed, and, you know, I don't want to put too much pressure on the town council, but, you know, we want to get, we want to get this ordinance or some improved ordinance in place, you know, as soon as we possibly can, because we know that you guys are going to start getting real busy real soon when budget season comes around and things like that. So that's all I had to say so far.
Thank you, Chip. Next up, Gina Fuller, you have the floor, Gina.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Gina Fuller. I am the district manager for the Southern Rhode Island Conservation District. Just for members of the council who may not know what the district is, we are a quasi-public agency established by the Rhode Island General Assembly in 1944. I represent the counties of Washington and Kent, and we were established to assist the landowners and municipalities to manage their soil and water resources. We were also established alongside the federal government Soil Conservation Service following the Dust Bowl, that was sort of the impetus of it, and we represent local landowners. I work very closely and cooperatively with the USDA and RCS, and I am here tonight to make comments on behalf of the farmers in Hopkington. I have to admit, I have not had the pleasure of being able to read the entire proposed changes for the entire solar ordinance. My comments are strictly regarding how the proposed changes that would affect the farm, your farm viability act would negatively impact farmers. So based on my review of the changes that I have seen, the first thing I would like to point out is that there is no mention in any of those proposed changes about the State's Farm, Forest, and Open Space Act. Based on a quick review of your farm viability ordinance, the thresholds for the dollar amount that a farm needs to be able to demonstrate, the $2,500, that's established in the farms, the State's Farm, Forest, and Open Space Act, and actually, the minimum acreage to be qualified by the state of Rhode Island as a farm is five acres. So the work that went into your town's farm viability ordinance, it should be commended, and the way that you, you know, portioned out farms based on their size, and then took into consideration solar as part of the viability of farms, I think should be commended. The proposed changes and some other materials that were forwarded to me regarding solar on farms clearly were written by someone who had not looked at the State's Farm, Forest, and Open Space Act, or taken into consideration the efforts on both the state's part and the federal government's part to ensure that farms are able to remain viable here in Rhode Island. I think there was a comment, you know, about the farms in Hopkington essentially being hobby farms, because their primary income is not from farming. Well, I can tell you that that's pretty typical in Rhode Island, and it wasn't the case years ago, and that most farmers would prefer to only have one job, and that preferred job would be to be a farmer. Unfortunately, because of property taxes, the cost of labor, and a lot of other market factors, it's just not possible these days for many farmers to maintain the farm as their sole source of income. However, I can tell you in the last several years that amazingly, farming is one of the growing sectors here in Rhode Island, and that I know multiple farms throughout Washington and Kent County who, with the addition of, you know, an acre of solar, have been able to realize, you know, the viability of their farm as a farm, and been able to devote the majority of their time and effort into their farm, making them more profitable, and being able to produce more food for us, which I think, when you talk about viabilities of farms, considering what we've all experienced this past year with COVID, and early on when we saw, you know, sort of a crashing of the food chain, it is really critically important to have farms that are viable. And with the proposed changes that you're considering that would essentially prohibit any ground-mounted solar systems on farms, you're, one that would prohibit us from being able to produce food on a year-round basis, which is becoming more and more of a reality here in Rhode Island, as you see more and more hot houses or high tunnels go up. Federal government has recently changed their regulations, which will now allow for farmers to receive both technical and financial assistance to install solar, mostly ground-mounted systems on their high tunnels, which will allow them to heat and ventilate those systems year-round and produce food for us on a year-round basis. You know, several years ago, I worked, you know, prior to working with the district, I worked with a local farmer in another town who installed 24 panels on his property just to heat and ventilate his four greenhouses and three outbuildings. Because of the size that he needed and the energy that he needed to generate, the requirements of national grid and the state solar programs required that he install a separate meter, and that the system could not provide house, could not provide electricity to his house. We're very specific about that. So I'm a little concerned that some of the things in your proposal are going to run contrary to state laws, contrary to federal programs, contrary to the programs that USDA and RCS has to assist farmers in using solar as part of their operations. And I would just, you know, request that maybe we have another workshop specifically focused on farms and solar and how important that is to the farms in our area. And then I think just finally, I would just like to make a comment about the prime farmland designation. I think definitions are very, very important. The prime farmland actually refers to prime farmland soils, and I agree with whoever it was that said that, you know, that's a great metric, and it's one that we should consider. And I think it makes sense when you're talking about non-farm properties and whether or not you want that soil permanently converted to solar uses. So that's, the state of Rhode Island has a list of prime farmland soils, it can be mapped, I can produce a map and send it to you folks tomorrow, so you can get an idea of where the prime farmland soils are located in Hopkington. I'm willing to guess, based on the handful of solar arrays that I've seen in Hopkington, most of them are not on prime farmland soils. But again, that's just a guess, based on my general knowledge of what farmlands, prime farmland soils generally are. And finally, just like to point out, the state of Rhode Island did change their rules and regulations last year regarding the Farm, Forest, and Open Space Act to incorporate solar into that act. And one of the new things that they did, it's in the regulations, it's 1.6. D. 5G. It requires applicants are required to submit a current conservation plan to the department, meaning DEM, that ensures continued viability of the farmland during and after the prescribed life of the renewable energy project. So I heard a lot of concerns about what's going to happen if the farmer, you know, decides to stop farming the year after that they get a solar array. Well, if they're in the Farm, Forest, and Open Space Act, one, there'll be a tax penalty, a property tax penalty for withdrawing from the act early, and I'm not quite sure what I, the regulations I just read to you exactly what that means, I haven't come across it yet, but the state has put in place a regulation that requires, in order to have the solar on a property that's covered by the Farm, Forest, and Open Space Act, that there is a plan to continue the viability of the farmland, both during the solar project and after the life of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
Steve, this is Bob Marw. Can I ask a question of Ms. Fuller?
Gina, you still there to ask, to answer a question?
I am.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, just a point of clarification, so where, as the state's concerned, where a solar installation is installed on a farm to help the farmer retain viability, is it, is it basically the solar installation providing energy to the farm primarily, and then if there's any, you know, overage that it gets, it gets sold back to the grid? Or are there many instances where the farmer is basically renting out, you know, acres of part of his land to a solar installation just as a alternate source of income?
Well, there's both. And, you know, the last couple of years, as you've all seen, there's been a big rush to put up these industrial-sized solar systems. So this, what the state did with their new regulations that were just put out in this past year was limit the amount of acreage a farm can convert from farm to solar if you're in the Farm, Forest, and Open Space Act. So they wanted, the, you know, the point of the state was to allow these farmers to have access to these programs, including the industrial, I'm not quite, I'm struggling for the right term here, you know, when they're renting, basically, the solar company is renting the space from the farmer versus providing the needs directly to the farmer. The state wanted to allow for farmers to be able to choose either option, but stay within the spirit of the Farm, Forest, and Open Space Act, which, the spirit of that act is to keep farmland in farm production by valuing that property at its current use of a farm as opposed to its valued use, you know, as a developed property. Did that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it did. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask Gina a question?
Hold on one second, Sharon. Yes, go ahead, Sharon.
Can you tell me again, you said that you were part of the Southern District? I wanted the full title, and I want, and I also wanted that map, that map that shows where the prime farmland soils are located, if you could send that to the town clerk?
I'm with the Southern Rhode Island Conservation District. There's three districts in Rhode Island, Northern, Eastern, and Southern. So Northern is Providence County, Eastern is Bristol and Newport, and Southern is Washington and Kent. And I can produce, I can send a link, but I'm pretty sure Hopkington has a good GIS, online GIS system, and you can probably go to that and select the soils layer if you want to see that online. I can have a map produced, but I'm just realizing my GIS guys are on vacation this week, so it'll probably be next week before we could actually get it to you.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. And then the other question I wanted to ask, in general, if we talked about 20, you said it's the state that's saying that $2,500 revenue
Yes.
defines a farm?
It's one of the components of the definition of a farm, yes.
And that is very low, so obviously, they do have to do something else. I guess I would just be interested in the average revenue that most farmers are making, you know, the average range?
And the majority of farmers in Rhode Island are making less than $25,000 a year. And I, we have a USDA census that I can send you that would sum all that up, and it does sum it up by county.
Okay.
It's important, I think, you know, to realize the majority of farms in Rhode Island are less than 10 acres, most of which are less than five acres. And we also have the most expensive farmland in the entire country.
Why is that?
Because it's based on real estate prices and size. We are losing farmland at the greatest rate across the country, and we happen to have the highest cost per acre of farmland, and, you know, that's based on basic real estate values.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Gina.
You're welcome.
If your number ends in 0977, you have the floor. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Luann McCormick on Lisa Lane. Can you hear me?
We can, Luann, thank you.
Fantastic. First of all, I want to tell you how incredibly happy and relieved Fantastic. First of all, I want to tell you how incredibly happy and relieved I am to hear these discussions and, um, and this information being, you know, being poured through again, um, as one of the, you know, one of the people in the neigh, one of the neighborhoods that is, you know, had to deal with the encroaching solar sprawl here. And hearing, having new faces and, um, and new talent up there is so refreshing. You know, all of this happened so fast. We, we got here, my husband and I moved here in, um, the latter part of two thousand and sixteen. I mean, basically that was about the time that all of this was starting. And it moved so quickly and there were so many decisions made so fast and, you know, such an incredible rush to get, you know, get this solar in by so many developers that the idea of being able to take a deep breath and take a look at what the PSES is and what it should be, based not only on, um, you know, on the, the obvious legalities that need to be looked at, but also on experience now. There's been so much experience of, you know, of what's happened. I mean, you know, what's happened in the trenches with this PSES? How did it actually work? How did it protect the town? How did it not protect the town? How did it protect residents? How did it not protect residents? Um, you know, I just, I'm so happy to hear this and I'm so grateful to all of you. And, uh, you know, I just, I, you know, I, I have a, a huge, huge smile on my face and sending you lots of, um, you know, lots of kudos and lots of energy, um, along those lines. And I just wanted to make one quick, um, observation about, you know, about the farm, um, you know, about the farm stuff. And I thought it was, um, quite a, there's quite a difference between, uh, you know, renting land to a solar developer versus putting in solar to keep your property, you know, so you cut down on your energy expenditure in order to produce whatever you're producing. And it sounds like, you know, there could potentially be, you know, some, some good kind of teasing out of the differences between those two and how to treat each of those issues differently. Because it sounds like they're, they're very different animals. And, uh, anyway, once again, thank you so much and I, um, and I sure appreciate you.
Thank you, Luann. Uh, next up, um, Harvey, the floor is yours.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, just listening to some of the conversation, uh, I think the best way to preserve prime agricultural soils in Hopkinton is to preserve farms. We're talking about one to three acres of solar. Uh, I know farms that, that have their solar, their one to three acres on prime agricultural soils. It has to do often with how close it is to where the three phase of power is located. I mean, they have to strike a deal. The one thing to keep in mind, uh, if that solar goes away, that land is still available for farming. It's not destroyed. If you put a house on that property, which is what has eaten up the majority of prime agricultural soils in Hopkinton, uh, you'll never see a farm there again. So, uh, it, it is a little bit of a trade off, but to just say you can't put it on prime agricultural soils. I have made arguments before the planning board, uh, like the James Farm. The planning board was trying to direct him to put the, uh, his one acre of solar in, uh, a farm field. And there were some pretty poor quality, uh, forests right next to that field. And, uh, I and the farmer himself advocated to put the, uh, solar there because he did not want to lose an acre of, of, uh, a nice hayfield. So I just want to give that perspective to you. And your, I hope your goal will be, your top goal will be to preserve farms. And the other issue that has always bothered me by saying, well, let's just direct these solar to the manufacturing zones. There's not a single zone in our town that was ever designed to hold a solar. The manufacturing zones, nobody thought about it when we, we created those zones. And I, I don't think it should just be automatically assumed that a manufacturing zone is a good place uh, to put a, a large scale solar, utility scale solar project. It needs to be at a location that works and works well for the environment and for, for the town. And so to say that automatically it should be allowed in commercial or allowed in manufacturing, I think that's been a, a problem since day one. And if you change it now and still say manufacturing, uh, go, go around and look at some of your manufacturing zones that haven't already been committed to solar and look at them yourself and see if you think that's really the right place to put it. And you may find that some of those spots really are not the right place to put a large scale solar project. So I think it needs a little bit more justification for the locations. So I just wanted to plant those seeds with you if I might. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Harvey.
Thanks, Harvey.
Uh, Council Hurst.
Yes, Scott Bill Hurst. I would like to note for the record that we got a very uh, great letter from, uh, Council Gary's better half, Lynn Salisbury Rubin, Gary and, uh, who, uh, runs Simplicity Farm and, uh, is really one of the successful farms, uh, in the southern part of our town. And she did write us a letter and, uh, it's, uh, very thought provoking and, and one of the things that she pointed out in that letter was the fact that when they place solar on that farm, it's, I know it's small solar, uh, it was in a place that, uh, couldn't be used for anything else. So I think if you take farmland or land that our farmers have or any of their places that qualify as a farm, a hundred percent of that property is not necessarily, necessarily favorable to growing things or use, use for agriculture. So there is the potential to give, uh, tax relief for these farmers. I think the, the real concern about solar, and the bigger issue is that a lot of people use that as a way to, uh, make it affordable for them to stay into farming. It's not that they're necessarily pro-solar as much as they, they're looking for a way to supplement their income or be able to pay property taxes. And I think it's an issue for all landowners, particularly large landowners. And it seems that we're not going to have, uh, any elimination of the continued use of, uh, property taxes to fund public education. That's the real issue that all these small towns have because they don't have a big tax base, but that's just an observation. But I do want to, uh, put a plug in for Mrs. Gary, uh, Council Gary's better half. She wrote an excellent letter and she has practical experience running, uh, the Simplicity Farm in the southern part of our town, on Tomacaw Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next up, if your, uh, last four digits are nine, five, six, eight, you have the floor.
Hello, this is, uh, Don Coleman from nine forty six Main Street. I just, um, I wanted to make a comment on the, on the Farm Viability Act. And, um, if you guys are talking about, um, not letting the farms, the farmers, um, put up solar on their farms, that, um, y- you're gonna be taking away a source of income for them to be able to continue farming. And when you refer to prime farmland, you know, everybody thinks farms are planting seeds in the ground and growing stuff out of the ground. And, you know, in the old days, yeah, that's true. New, what is that? New, new ways of farming, um, have come about over the last twenty years or so, vertical farms. Farms can, um, grow a lot more food in smaller areas now. So saying that, you know, you, you can't put up solar installations on prime farmland is really all in, you know, perspective, what perspective you're looking at it, because you can grow more food in smaller areas now. So i- if the farms aren't able to, you know, be viable and they have to go out of business, and some of the farms around here have been around here for a hundred years, um, they're going to be selling their farms to developers and, you know, they're going to put up affordable, you know, income complexes. You're going to put up more houses. You're going to put up neighborhoods. And, you know, you're going to have to think about how that's going to affect our school system. Because you're going to have a lot more children. You're going to have to expand the schools. And, um, if you guys know how much it costs per student to educate children in our school systems, which is a lot more than most people paying taxes in this town per student, um, you're going to, um, have to deal with, you know, the schools and expanding the schools and also raising property taxes to be able to keep the schools in business. So, so this is, you know, this, this runs full circle. So that's something that you really need to take into consideration before you just say, no, you can't have any solar on your farms. Um, and I do want to thank Gina Fuller for all the information, um, that she provided to the town council. Um, she is very knowledgeable on, on all of this. And if I were you guys and you wanted more specifics, um, I would get in contact with her because, um, she can help you sort this out. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Calderon, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm Elaine Calderon and I'm the Hopkinton representative for the Wood Pocket Talk Wild and Scenic Rivers Stewardship Council. So in your packets, you have a copy of a letter from the stewardship council which had been sent to the previous town council regarding citing of alternative energy systems and also specific suggestions from the stewardship council for the current proposed solar ordinance amendment. I, I don't want to repeat what's in that email, uh, but I would like to say that Hopkinton is fortunate to have two rivers and five tributaries specifically identified under the Wild and Scenic designation, along with the year round streams. And less than one percent of rivers in the U.S. can claim this honor. So towns within this nationally recognized watershed have the important responsibility when developing any town ordinance, to include protections for the area alongside these rivers and streams and to conserve forested areas. When reading both the current solar ordinance and the proposed amendment, I didn't see any reference to protecting our nationally recognized wild and scenic rivers and tributaries. In your discussions, I hope you'll consider incorporating the specific protections the stewardship council suggested in the email. And in any future ordinances where applicable, you will include protections for these water bodies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn. Carol, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I hate to belabor the point about farms, but while Gina Fuller was on the line, I wanted to ask her, what really is the definition of a farm? I know she mentioned the twenty five hundred income, but I'm trying to understand if there's more to it than that. Like, you know, six of our Farm Viability Act solar farms are on land assessed as farms in town. But we do have one that is actually assessed as forestry. So I'm trying to understand, is there a distinction between farms versus forestry? So if Gina could respond.
Um, Carol, I do not, oh, well, hold on. Gina, are you able to answer that question?
I am able to answer that question. So according to DEM and the Farm Forest and Open Space Act, farmland is classified. Oh, I'm looking. I don't have my glasses on. I'm struggling. Hold on. Um, so to verify, let, let me see, the property must have either applied for or written for a cons, uh, written conservation plan. Hold on. The simple answer that I can give you without actually reading this is that farms, basically you have to have five acres excluding your, your house site. You need to be able to demonstrate the ability to make at least two, two thousand five hundred dollars in farm income. And that you have a written conservation plan, which you apply for through the conservation district. For forest land, you need a minimum of, I'm going to make sure I give you the right number. It's more acreage. Here it is. Fifteen acres. Um, and you have to apply through the DEM forestry department. In order to get that, you need a forged forest stewardship plan, um, written and you need your approval. Well, for both classifications, you need the approval of your tax assessor and the district.
So forests end up also qualifying as farms in some cases?
No, forests are qualified as forests and they have a separate, um, path that they go through. They, they are run through the DEM Department of Forestry and they set the, the rules for managing forests.
But do farms get like a farm identification number?
Yes.
And so that is unique for farms versus forests?
If they apply to USDA NRCS or, or the Farm Service Agency, then they would be given an official federal government farm and tract number. But they don't necessarily need to get a farm and tract number to be part of the state's farm classification. What they need is DEM's approval. And the, the, um, they need to make the minimum size requirement and the minimum income requirement and have a conservation plan on file.
Right. So I'm just trying to understand if we can distinguish between farm and forests in, um, a legal way in town, because I think we're starting to see forests trying to take advantage of our farm viability.
Uh, the state, the state, um, classifies them differently, so I would think, but I'm not a lawyer, um, that the town might be able to, you know, manage that within your ordinances.
Okay, thank you. And so outside of that, the other only thing I want to mention is, you know, um, Mr. Hurst had mentioned about, you know, large landowners needing to manage their property tax. And that ends up, I, I just want to have to comment that I get frustrated by that because I, with my one and a half acres and a ranch house, pay more in property tax than many of our large landowners. So, you know, I think we got to always remember facts on this issue. You know, the large landowners kind of get a tax break for the amount of land they have, and I pay more tax than they do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Um, up next, Chip Hale.
I, uh, it's Chip Hale again, two eleven Chastel Road. Just real quick with regards, one thing I'd like to point out, uh, or maybe this is a question. It's not just about land classification. Um, as far as I know, from the Rhode Island Right to Farm Act, there's actually a definition of agricultural activities in that. And that's where they actually lay out what's, what is actually considered, um, an agricultural activity. So, I, I don't need to go through this, but I think one thing, first of all, let me back up and I stated this last, last time at the workshop. I am absolutely on board with, um, doing whatever we can to help ensure that our local farms remain viable. Having said that, I think, um, we find ourselves talking a lot about only a few parts of a very complicated equation. For instance, someone, I think it was Mr. Buford who brought up that, well, if the farmers go away, then we're just going to have, or maybe it wasn't Mr. Buford, it was someone else that said, uh, there would be affordable housing and that, that kind of made me frustrated because people who throw around the term because people who throw around the term, watch out for affordable housing to scare people away from, as a, as a worse option for solar, or whatever the case needs to be. So I think that should, we should really stop with that, first of all. But one thing that we really need to think about is not just the, you know, farmland and its designation, or even the designation of prime soil, I'm assuming that prime farm soil, prime farmland or soil classification is a USDA classification. I'd be interested in seeing the map, but I would be curious to see when that data was actually collected, because these things, as we all know, as we look around here, landscapes change a lot. And so the only, it's, and I would point out that it is not just the soil that is the only thing that needs to be considered and the ability to raise crops, as we all know, we need a favorable climate, we need moisture, sunlight, yada, yada, yada. So, again, to back up, farms, I think, and, and that farmland is important. I think it's something that we really need to keep in mind because of the, its ability to provide food and resources and things like that. However, we cannot, or we should not just be valuing that land higher than our forests, for example, because our forests are just as important of a natural resource to this community, and particularly to this community, for the role that it plays in capturing our groundwater, filtering our groundwater. We do not have public water around here, or at least, as far as I know, most of us are on well water. And so for our forests play a very, very important role in ensuring that we have clean and sufficient groundwater around here, okay? Again, I don't make up this point, I know, oh, you're an environmentalist, whatever. The point that I'm trying to make here is that let's, we need to start, to the best of our ability, ensure that when we're doing these back-of-the-envelope calculations where we place different values on different activities in this town, it's unfair, completely unfair, to leave out important pieces of that equation. And I, it's, and it's a complicated equation, and I don't expect any of us, or all of us, any one of us, to know all the pieces of that equation, but we need to be very careful when we're constructing these ordinances, when we are not considering all of those pieces of the formula. You know, so, so that's, I, I just, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit frustrated in some of the way this farm discussion has gone, because we're suddenly placing this enormous value on farms that Ms. Fuller actually pointed out, there's, there's very little income that comes from these farms, and most of these farms are, she said, I think, five acres or less, yet if we consider putting an area of solar in a farm of five acres or less, now it's a four-acre farm, and it's outside of the characterization of a farmland or potentially. So we just need to be very careful when we, and actually consider some of the sources of the information that we're getting as well, before we, before we write an ordinance that is going to lock us into, you know, a situation, a potential, maybe not a worse situation, but just a, an untenuous situation as we move forward. That's all.
Thank you, Chip. Go ahead, Counselor Hurst.
I do have a question for the attorney. One of my notes I've made is we're under a time, timeline for dealing with this. I believe the only exception to it is if the SCULCOS agreed to an extension. So, to the attorney for the town, what is a drop dead deadline as far as acting on this proposal to fulfill the legal requirement, please?
Peter, would you be better served to answer that question as far as the timeline?
I, I could answer that. And in fact, we've already agreed to an extension of the timeline for the advertising date. It was the prior council that set the date in January, and I, I don't have it in front, I can get that date.
January 19th, I believe.
Yep, January 19th, that's already beyond that. So we agreed to the extended deadline to reach that date, and as we said at the last meeting, you know, we'll agree to any extension that's necessary, you know, we're not trying to, to.
Force the issue.
Force the issue, yes.
Because I think Counselor Hurst, again, there's a lot of legitimate questions and concerns, and there's some things that some, some of us would agree to and disagree on others, and it's a very complicated thing. And the only other question I would have for you, and it was my pleasure to sponsor this, because I think it's important to, to have the discussion and people have access to the town government, is how many communities in Rhode Island have this type of proposal before it or have had it in the recent past? Because obviously this proposal didn't come out of thin air, and I was just curious, how many of the other 38 cities and towns have dealt with this? Do you know that question, the answer to that question?
So I don't have an exact statistic of all the solar ordinances that have been enacted, but I do know that at our firm, we represent, when we drafted this, we represented five towns. We recently picked up another one this last election cycle, but, and we've used this model in a number of different towns that we represent. It's been used in South Kingstown, it's been used in West Warwick, we used a similar framework in Tiverton, but again, each town is different. Each town has their own set of concerns, their own unique land uses, and especially, there was the prior history of citizen involvement that raised certain issues that they were concerned with. So although the, the framework has been used in other towns, I'd say the two main issues, and I just reiterate it quickly, that we focused on for, for this particular ordinance, in addition to a lot of other stuff, but the two issues are limiting to the manufacturer's own, as opposed to allowing it into commercial zones, or, and then also the precedence of approval issue, which, you know, we didn't want to relitigate that or raise it up to, you know, point fingers at anyone, but we just wanted to, we felt that, that was the better way of handling these projects was to have the master plan considered by the planning board first, and then after that consideration, move to the council. So we incorporated that as well. So the framework has been used in a lot of different towns, but those two specific issues were what were highlighted for this town, in addition to some other things as well.
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple other things, and then I'll add others. How should I, as a member of the town council, who has the responsibility of maintaining the prerogatives for my office with four other people as a town council, what do you think of the, the concerns of dealing with this issue? The powers of the town council versus the powers of the planning board dealing with this type of issue from your perspective? And also, I was also concerned about the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, that they don't usually, they don't rule on every site that's being considered, like, we had the Kamoli Granite proposal, DEM was going to make a ruling after the fact, or it was included in the motion. So the RI Department of Environmental Management does not necessarily make a ruling on every proposal before it's being done. So, you know, when the council approves it or the planning board approves it, I mean, as far as I know, DEM approval is not necessarily required when the town makes a decision. Could you address those concerns, please?
Sure, that was, that was, that was addressed to me, Councilman Hurst, I can respond to that. I guess I'll take the second point first, with regard to the, this is to regard to the contaminated site provision we put in there. You know, we wanted to tie a contaminated site to something that was easily identifiable. So we, we did put in the definition about having the RITM Letter of Responsibility to get the contaminated site solar, to invoke that provision. But I don't think that would necessarily put a stop to any other solar project, just because it doesn't meet the contaminated site definition yet. I think all it would do is that it would have to be within the manufacturing zone, or it would have to pass its master plan approval before the planning board, and either be within the manufacturing zone already, or get a zoning change after the master plan approval. And, and then the contaminated site also gives a little bit more leeway with regard to the dimensional requirements, but I think that's really important to have the designation beforehand, because if you're going to give some leeway on the dimensional requirements based on the area of the contaminated site, I think it is important to, to have it settled, what, what exactly the contaminated site is. So if you have a small portion that's contaminated, you don't necessarily want to give them a more lenient review process if, if they're going to be placing the solar on a larger portion of the property. To your first point about the, the, the review process, it's been, it's been my position that the state law sets that precedence of approval, but beyond that and putting that to the side, I do think that it, it's, it's a better and more orderly process for reviewing these projects, for, for two reasons. The first is if a project is going to require a zone change, to put them through the master plan ringer first and go through the planning board and have them submit their master plan application, the council's going to get a much more detailed proposal to review by the time they have to vote on a, on a zone change. So that, that's one reason why I think it's, it's beneficial from a policy standpoint. And, and the other reason I think it's beneficial from a policy standpoint is because state law really designates the planning board as the body that's responsible for your comprehensive plan and making land use decisions on an individual basis. And so I think from that perspective, it's, it's better if you leave the details of each project and ensuring consistency with the comprehensive plan to the planning board, then you can leave some of the bigger picture questions to come up only after it's been vetted by the planning board and it's passed through that, that review procedure. So that was the thought process on that.
Thank you. And I just want to know, to your question, Scott, you know, as far as have a, a, any other town, you know, uses framework, I don't think we as a town need to wait for any other towns. I think it's important that we take care of our concerns in our town and we move forward and, and really tackle this. Thank you. Next up, if your number ends in 1494, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Lynn Rubin-Gary, 16 Tomacog Road, owner of Simplicity Farms. I do know that I wrote the council a letter with my concerns, and I know Mr. Moffett had said earlier that the farms is not the meat and potatoes of this proposal, and it seems to be just plopped in there, and you are getting a lot of calls tonight about the farms, because it seems like we were just plopped in there and not really considered on how beginning any type of ground-mounted solar would affect farming. One thing I do have to say that, I think it was Mr. Bebler that called in and said that the town needs to decide what defines a farm, and that at this point is defined on a state level, not a town level. And I do know that Counselor Davis is concerned about really what makes us a farm. We don't just move here, like I did five years ago, and say, I want to be a farm. I had to go through state guidelines to declare myself a farm. The state came out here and approved my property for a farm. I have a conservation plan with the NRCS. I'm responsible for a survey through the Rhode Island Agriculture on a yearly basis to remain a farm, and I know there's been concerns about that $2,500 minimum, but as you heard Gina Fuller explain, Rhode Island has very small farms. $2,500 may not seem a lot, but, you know, farming 2,500 pounds of zucchini or possibly 4,000 pounds of pumpkins to make $2,500 is not a hobby farm. And I also know hay is a lot of work, and the cost of milk right now is not very high, so dairy farmers are struggling, you know, to make money, as Ms. Fuller also stated. There's not too many farmers in this town of Hopkinton that wouldn't love to farm full-time. Unfortunately, that doesn't provide for pensions and health benefits and stuff like that. So many of us do work outside of our farm, but I know Mr. Bebler said that the town needs to decide what a farm is, and at this point, that is decided by the state. I, I do feel that the farms were kind of plopped in there. I do think that this proposal has a lot of great points in it to control these large industrial solar arrays in our town. As Gina Fuller pointed out, the state guideline for a small farm is five acres, and working with the Conservation Committee back in 2016, we actually love our land, and we actually made it a 15-acre minimum to get one acre of solar in Hopkinton. So we went above and beyond what the state requires you to be a farm, and there wasn't a farmer there that we worked months and months, and I'm not sure if anyone on the council was aware of the work that went into the Conservation Committee to come up with our proposal to the town council to get our one acre of solar, but we have farmers in Hopkinton that own 300 acres, and they will only be allowed the max three acres of solar. So there's quite a buffer there between neighbors, and that is not the kind of solar that you're seeing in some of these 30-acre solar farms. And that's it, that was my point.
Thank you very much, Lynn.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, did you have your hand raised?
I did. This is Lisa Cook-Martin. I just wanted to go back a little ways, when it was discussed about the waiver that the SCULCOS may have waived the, the requirements for procedure or adoption or amendment of the zoning ordinances. I have nothing in the file that's a written waiver of those requirements. Subsequently, that ad has gone to the papers and is now being published for a hearing on Tuesday, the 19th of January. I just wanted to report that to you and let you all know that.
Thank you, Lisa.
We can get something to the file if, if we need to.
Thank you. If your number ends in 2759, you have the floor.
Hey, Steve?
Yes, please state your name and address.
Yeah, Frank Landolfi, 3 Elizabeth Court, Hope Valley. Just a quick point, a couple actually. It'd be fair, I think, for folks that are on, on the line to, if, if, when you go through public comment period, to, to get the folks that haven't spoken before you get to folks that already have spoken, it'd be very, very helpful for the rest of us that want to speak in a timely manner. Secondly.
I just want to comment on that, Frank. I am going right through the order as hands are raised, so.
Right, but Chip Hale spoke twice and others have not spoken, that's my point. So that being said, the other, the other point I wanted to make was that I, I disagree with Attorney Squirt's comments about some of the procedure with planning board and town council as to where it goes first and what each body does. That is dictated by state law, and I, I don't, I don't agree with that. My main point tonight is, I think Attorney Squirt, as well as Counselor Davis, made comments about a side-by-side comparison that Joe Moreau had wanted on the website. Can someone on the council, maybe you can, Steve, shed some light as to why Mr. Bebler is preparing a side-by-side comparison that the council is using between the old ordinance and the new one? May I suggest? May I suggest that the council requires a subject matter expert like the town solicitor or the town planner or Mr. Squirtz, if he wants to take it up, to author the side by side comparison. I would not take Mr. Bibler's side by side comparison. If you're if you're going to actually make decisions on this ordinance, which is fully within your purview, I suggest you do not rely on his side by side comparison. Furthermore, I would suggest that Counselor Gary and or Hurst or both mandates an author that has a that is a subject matter expert author that side by side comparison. Otherwise, don't take it for what it's worth. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. If your number ends in one, seven, zero, one, you have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Steve, counselors. This is Sherry Aroni in Dy Hill Road. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. None, none really pertaining. I know a lot of the comments have been on the farm portion of the ordinance, but my comments aren't really on that. You know, it's it's more of in a in a general way. You know, as we move through the process, you know, of reviewing this ordinance, you know, as a town. I really hope that it becomes a product of the experiences over the last two years. You know, there's a lot of lot of things that, you know, have happened, you know, that there's there's been. You know, there's been a lot of upset. There's been a lot of confusion, you know, in the public. And I think this ordinance is a is a great opportunity to to fix some of the things that maybe aren't maybe just aren't in there and need to be in there. Two items that come to mind, and and this would probably have to be run by the council, by the the legal council, excuse me. If you can even put this sort of thing in the ordinance, but it it occurred to me, so I wanted to mention it to you guys. Two things, you know, that that have that have come up both in the planning board sections and the town council and they've you know, tried to set stipulations to it, but I think if it's in the ordinance, perhaps it might really, you know, solidify it and clarify things. One thing is construction hours. I know that's come up both at the planning board level and at the town council level on what they're they want for the hours of construction during solar projects. And perhaps if it was actually written into the ordinance, you know, then there's something actually in writing. There's a standard operating procedure. Here it is. You know, there's no ambiguity on it. The other thing is cutting buffers, you know, that's the other thing that has been a little bit of a gray area. And it's it's caused some issues. Perhaps if that is really spelled out clearly in the actual ordinance, in the actual PSES, you know, with no ambiguity, no, no room for any confusion, that's just another thing. And and those are just two examples. You know, I'm sure there's lots of other examples that the planning board members can contribute to this, the town, you know, other people in the town. It's it's just something I thought of that I wanted to mention. Let's see, what else did I have here? You know, I know Scott had asked, you know, how does this ordinance compare to other towns? You know, over the last two years, I've I've glanced at a couple of ordinances for other towns just out of curiosity. And a lot of them are pretty, pretty specific and pretty tight. For example, one town I noticed they actually will cap how quick, how frequently someone could reapply after a denial. I believe it's a two year wait period. So for example, if a, you know, a developer got denied, they'd have to wait two years before they can reapply, you know, things like that. Let's see. And I just want to say that I I know Attorney Squirtz spoke to the precedence of approval that's in our land and subdivision regulations. And that is what I've read and I'm glad to see it written in this ordinance the way it is because that is in the state land and subdivision regulations, the way he read it, and it is in, you know, some general laws too, I think, that, you know, he's mentioned. So I'm glad to see that in there and I'm sure the solicitor for the town of Hopkinton will review that and, you know, give their opinion on that as well. So that's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to, you know, thank you guys again for for opening this up and I hope that it's a product of a lot of people's experiences to make it better. Thanks.
Thank you, Sherry. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Not hearing anybody. I would like to go back to the councils. Are there any counselors who have any comments or or questions? Any follow up?
Yeah, Scott Billhurst. If I understood our town clerk, Lisa, that if the applicant wanted to allow more time. Apparently, legal advertising has already been done for the 19th. If I understand that correctly, and I don't know if that can be changed at this this at this date. The other thing is I think one of the big concerns is, is, you know, tax relief for everybody, but particularly tax relief for farmers and what other alternatives they have to to generate some income so that they don't feel obliged to sell sell their property or part of their property because of property tax pressures. But the other thing is I'd like to have the lawyer discuss the R- R- Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management because I understand that sometimes they like on the Kamali Granite thing, they don't get involved until after something's approved. When we made when former Councilor Capalba made the motion, it was included the RIDM DEM to decide on any contamination on the side of what needed to be done for remediation. So I'm a little concerned about that being addressed because the RIDM doesn't make a decision before, ahead of time, unless they've already made a ruling on whether that specific site was contaminated. And then you will have some people will comment and say that remediation has been done, but I would assume that in order to have successful remediation, the DM would have to make a decision saying this has been remediated. There's so many sites before people were environmentally conscious about old old junkyards in town or old gas stations or old landfills of of yesterday that still somewhere in the ground has contamination. So and I understand, I believe it was Chip Hile or someone has talked about just because of placement contaminated doesn't mean you necessarily have to agree with solar, which I understand that concept. But I would like to have some discussion on the RIDM and I I sit here and I have a high regard for our town planner. And I'd like to have some of his input and comments. Town Planner is the professional hand for this town on development issues and really be interested in some of the perspective of our town planner, Jim Lampia. That's just what I have to say, and I don't know how much more I will say tonight, but it's really good that we have a lot of people that are speaking on this issue and and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. There's one more person I would like to speak. Deb O'Leary. Floor is yours.
Hi, Steve. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Deb O'Leary, forty-four Pleasant View Drive. I'm here to talk mostly about what we're going through right now, and that is COVID and the fact that we're doing this all online. I really think that something this important should not be decided while we are limited in our interactions with one another. It it's really too important. And I don't know, and maybe Mr. Squirtz can answer this question. If this is enacted, would it stop any of the large developments that are already in the works? That's all I have to say, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Yeah, I'd like to comment. I would imagine if anything's approved, for the most part, they would have to, they'd benefit from the rules that were in place when they were approved. I mean, there might be some changes beyond when they were approved, but it would seem that they were granted certain rights that have already been adopted. They would continually have them with maybe some modification, but generally they would maintain what has already been approved. I am concerned, and I think Deb O'Leary brings up a very important point. Particularly among our older residents, you know, there's even people, and I'm sixty-seven, a lot of people didn't grow up with computers. They with this COVID thing, they just they don't do Zoom meetings. They don't do any of that type of stuff. So we have a lot of people who are definitely interested in this topic and they don't participate because they don't they're not up on the technology of it. And that's the sad part about this whole thing of government right now. If you people like to go to a meeting and get up and speak and address that their their elected leaders, which this Zoom format. Did I misspeak?
No, you're fine. I think that was Deb. I think she.
It was just some background noise.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm I'm already done. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I would just like to slightly address that point. So, I mean, I I understand, you know, the whole, you know, let's hold on, let's wait COVID and all this, but I I really don't see any developers saying the same thing. I mean, I just can't imagine them saying, hey, it's COVID, let's let's not look into Hopkinton to put any solar development. I just, I mean, I I absolutely take Deb's, you know, comments to heart. I mean, it's it's very important. All of our, all of us counselors have have email addresses. We have phone numbers. We're more than willing to take emails, to take your calls or whatever, to to address any of that, to get up to speed. I mean, I I'm sure any document could be could be made available to anyone who wanted it. So with that argument, I'm just going to say that I'm I'm happy we're having these hearings now. It is unfortunate that we are in the situation we are, but you know, some things don't stop moving. So I think we need to move forward and and that's my opinion. Thank you.
I got something to say. Hey, guys, Council Gary. I I kind of concur with with Deb O'Leary. A, we're in the middle of a crisis. I get that. We've all been dealing with that for nine months. Some people understand, hey, how to call in. I explained it to some people if they wanted to voice them, voice their thoughts on some of this process. But the thing I look at is we're doing it in the middle of a holiday. A lot of people aren't really paying attention to politics. And that kind of, you know, that's the old saying, you know, is, you know, we're going to watch what where we're at and all that, what it may be. I think we, with such a big change that's going to affect us all, I definitely want to see what our attorney says. I definitely want to have input from Al Dioro in the Planning Department. I'd like to have input from Sherry DeShernis from zoning, and I'd like to see what the town's building inspector has to say. I'd really like to get everybody on the same loop and go forward. With something like this, I don't see a reason to rush into it. I understand what you're saying, Steve, as far as developers, but that's something that maybe the town planner can bring up and go from there. I think we definitely need some more time on this.
I would Scott Billhurst. I would concur with the general attitude of Counselor Gary. We do have a billing inspector. We have a town planner. We have staff that represents us professionally and their input is very important since this is a major thing. And especially in light of the fact that the applicant has said that they're not restricted by time. I'm only concerned about the fact that the 19th has been decided and I guess the advertising is going out. I'll have to, what I'm interested in from the attorney sort of town is is can we, when we have a vote, can we vote to delay it on the 19th if we still have to have a vote on the 19th to fulfill the procedural requirements? Because apparently the the legal advertising has already been done, but this is a very serious issue. And we have paid staff members and town planner, the billing inspector, and I'm still interested in what the fire districts are saying and it's, I believe the letter, and Lisa can correct me, I think the letter went out the fifteenth of December. It's the twenty eighth today. They should be given some time, particularly in regard to solar and houses. Excuse me, and how it impacts firefighting. So this is a very serious matter and but it would be good to have those perspectives, excuse me, heard from. Thank you.
Counselor Moffitt, so i- is it time or discussion that we need? I mean, I think it's discussion, obviously.
And some time.
I mean, and and some time. I mean, I mean, discussion is going to come with the time. I mean, that's I mean, we can have discussion, 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 which I'm all for having discussion. I mean, it obviously sounds like, you know, we need another workshop with invitations to who all, who who you listed there. And I mean, just request their attendance in this meeting. It's, I mean, they don't have to wait till the meeting to respond as a council or you know, this this body, we can give them some homework to do as far as, you know, what's your thoughts on it? I mean, I I just think that's that's where we need to go. As as far as time, I mean, time's going to come with discussion. I just don't I I don't know what time other than getting all that discussion is is going to do. I mean, three, four months down the road just doesn't make sense to me. I, that's my opinion. I think once we have all the facts and we've you know, discussed it at the max, then we need to move a move forward decision. Attorney Squirtz, as far as the legal advertisement being placed in your flexibility with with this process, how would we handle that? What would be the timeline?
So I'd leave it, I'd leave the ultimate decision to your solicitor. My suggestion would be since since it has been advertised for a hearing, move forward towards that hearing. You can you can assign homework to your town staff. And in fact, I I think that's that's definitely the appropriate way to go. I think at the end of the day, and there were a couple of comments to the effect, which I completely agree with. You're going to need to have your solicitor take a look at it and and they're going to need to tweak it and and make it to something they're comfortable with. Your planner will have to take a look at it and have something that he's comfortable with as long as as well as zoning and building. And when you do get to the hearing that's been advertised to the 19th, you can just continue that hearing out again, once it's been advertised. And, you know, we won't object to that if that's what you decide to do, if you need a little bit more time, either because your town staff are still putting together their comments. Or they've presented you with a draft of comments or revised ordinance and you want to consider that. Or you want to kick it out for them to incorporate some of the discussion. So I think that's probably the way, the best way to handle it would be to assign the homework, like you said. Come back on January 19th. Hold the public hearing, which has been advertised, and if you need additional time, you can vote to continue the public hearing, which I can tell you at this point now that we wouldn't object if that's what you decided to do.
Thank you. And I only ask that question because we are obligated to have that hearing. So it's not the fact that I'm deferring to the applicant's lawyer for absolute advice and what direction ahead. I just want that for everybody to know. It's, I want to do what we need to do, and that's how I'll move forward. I have one more comment from the audience. One, four, nine, four, last four digits. Go ahead.
This is Lynn Rubin Gary again. I just have a quick question. I was very curious how many people are logged into tonight's meeting compared to the number of people that were going to Charahoe Schools and Hope Valley Schools because solar is such a big issue in this town. Because solar is such a big issue in this town.
Sure. At the most, we had 27 attendees and six panels.
How many, how many solar meetings had to be rescheduled from town hall to a larger venue? Because so many people came.
I would, I would not be able to answer that question, but I know as a Zoom format, we can take as many attendees as, as possible.
Right. So I mean, it's just my point that this is such a very important issue in our town that it's such a shame that this type of technology is just, doesn't seem to be reaching out to the number of people that were attending those large meetings. And although I hate to see this postponed because it is a very important issue, I'm just, I'm concerned that it's not reaching everybody. That's just my point.
Thank you for sharing.
I hate to see someone down the, I hate to see someone down the line trying to put a solar panel on their farm to fence in their livestock and find out that, you know, several years earlier that, that, um, you know, that was rejected and that they can't do that just because they were unaware of it. So, um, you know, I just think trying to get the word out to the details of this proposal is so important.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel Gary?
Hey Lisa, this, Lisa, this is addressed to you. I know, what is the, I know the state guidelines change on a daily, if not an hourly basis, but what is the maximum we can have for people in, in the chambers here?
I think you're limited to 10. This is Lisa, actually, and I think right now you're limited to 10.
All right, thank you, Lisa. So we could, so we could theoretically have seven more people if it was just me, Council Hurst and President Moffett.
I don't know if you could or not. I would want to defer to what the governor is requiring at this point. I mean, we're still just getting out of that three week pause. We've just had Christmas. They're anticipating that there may be another increase in COVID cases because people are mingling. So I just don't, I would not want to just predict that we could do that and then not be able to actually do that. I, I think it's too early to say that it's, that we could do that. Hopefully with the vaccines that's coming, we'll be able to do that by June, but we'll see.
June. I think, I think what I'm trying to get at is when we talk about technology and people knowing how to log on, I actually showed a couple of people the other day, this is how you log on. And some of them might have comprehended it and some didn't. I guess my thing is some people like, like what was said about the solar meetings where we all used to go to the height, we used to go to Charahoe Middle School. Some people just like to be able to come in and sit and give their view, get up and talk and stuff like that. That's what, that's what I was trying to get is how many people can we have in here?
Thank you, Counsel Gary. I have one more hand up here. Emily, you have the floor.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to speak to that concern about, um, public meetings. This is Emily Schmshania, Chase Hill Road. I'm also a planning board member. As you mentioned, Steve, the developers aren't waiting. We, on the planning board, we hear, uh, projects come before us every month and we have public comment periods and public hearings on some of these issues every month. And they, they're not stopping because of the pandemic and we don't have the ability to stop them because of the pandemic. So I understand that it's really important to have as much participation in these types of public hearings as possible. But if, you know, if we were to pause this process, then it would be critical to pause all processes because the development and the, the new projects that come before us won't stop while we, while we wait until we can all gather in a, in a location. So I, I understand the concern, but you know, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough series of decisions. So I just wanted to offer that point of view. Thanks.
Thank you. So.
Bob Marvel, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure, go ahead, Bob.
So to, to reiterate what Emily said, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We don't know when this is going to end to the point where we can have large gatherings again. We, we can't stop doing what we're doing, what we need to do. We need to move ahead. And, and I think that we, we just, we just got to keep, you know, plowing ahead. You know, the, the only, the only thing we can do to, to, you know, allow us the extra time to do this is, is possibly to do a temporary moratorium on, on any new solar projects coming into town. I, I don't know if that's possible. I don't know what the ramifications of that are, but it would, you know, help buy us a little time.
Good idea. I, all I, all I know is Counsel Hurst is I, I understand the moratorium issue. It wouldn't cover any applications currently in the system, but then I'd be willing, and I asked the solicitor for the town of Hopkinton to, and probably both solicitors, both the, well, at least our solicitor for the council to advise us on the legal issues dealing with that question. So we have an idea where we stand legally as a, as a town council.
Thank you. We'll, we'll discuss that in an executive session or something like that, Scott. I'm going to save that for that time period. I have one hand up. Go ahead, Eric.
All right, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, Eric Bibler again. You know, I just wanted to come back to full circle to the comment that I made sort of near the top of the meeting. Um, I think all this is great. I think that the, certainly the town planner should weigh in here. I know that the Chair of the Planning Board sent in a letter with some suggestions, some of which were, you know, procedural. Um, I definitely think that the town solicitor should take a close look at this and, you know, advise the council if there's any trouble in here. But I guess what I want to bring back, bring this back to is I believe that, I don't think there's anything in the old solar ordinance that was beneficial to the town that isn't in this draft. The idea behind this draft was to make up deficiencies for the most part. I'm setting aside for a second the debate over, you know, farm viability. But I'm talking about, you know, buffers and setbacks and view sheds. And, you know, this draft ordinance actually calls for a, um, you know, planning board permitting process and a special use permit for large projects, which, you know, adds another dimension that helps protect the town and makes it less of an absolute right to come into a large tract of property and develop it. So given the fact that this framework basically tries to take the old ordinance, the existing ordinance, I should call it, and extend it, I think all of these efforts from the town planner, the building inspector, the town solicitor and so forth, would be a lot more fruitful if there was a sense of the council that you wanted to take this framework and shape it to your liking, you know, retain the 2016 amendment to the farm viability ordinance or not, or amend it, or whatever you wanted to do. But all of these other provisions, because really, I think if you're going to have Jim Lamb fear weigh in and your solicitor and so forth, you're kind of, you're going to want to go through this line by line. And I would think that the individual counselors and even planning board members would want to come back, you know, provision by provision by provision and state what they wanted to change if they didn't like it. You know, and that's how you get to a, that's how you get to a final draft. But at some point, pretty soon, I think, you know, I think the council sort of needs to decide whether they want to commit themselves to this project. And if so, I, I would, I would, I would be organizing your efforts in that direction. And I don't think there's anything to lose by doing that because when you block this out, I mean, you know, these, this ordinance has a certain logic to it. It has, you know, certain provisions that have to be covered in any ordinance. And I think you can just sort of block it out and work through it methodically. And we're already familiar with a lot of these issues. So that's what I would recommend. And then everybody has their appointed role in this. And at the end of the day, uh, you guys decide whether you, you're happy with it, you know? And then you take a vote on it. And what happened the last time, I think we had multiple drafts on the proposed ordinance and the council went through it and, you know, sort of had a discussion about whether everybody was satisfied with the first section and the second section and the third section and the fourth section, until they finally got to where they could take a vote. You know, that's what I would recommend. Thank you.
Hey Eric. One more here. 51, I'm sorry, 1701, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, um, thanks. Sherri Aronian on Die Hill again. Um, one suggestion I just, I just thought of, you know, since the farm viability portion of the ordinance, you know, seems to, um, you know, have a lot of, you know, questions, comments, concerns, would it be possible even to almost work the ordinance from the angles that are not inclusive of the farm viability ordinance? You know, the other pieces of it and maybe, you know, do that last? And that would maybe give more people time to, um, like a few other callers had said, you know, jump on the calls, become familiar with the Zoom process, um, that sort of thing to, to continue to weigh in as the conversations move forward. You know, maybe if that, that portion of the ordinance got moved to the end and, and kind of tackle, um, pieces of, um, the ordinance that are really, aren't pertaining to farm viability. It's just a suggestion, um, you know, to try to help people with the, uh, the Zoom technology and what's going on. Cause I, I do think you guys should keep moving forward with it. You know, while at the same time, you know, encouraging participation from everybody. But it was just an idea I had, just wanted to mention. Thanks.
Thank you, Sherri. I would, I would just like to comment, um, you kind of what to Eric is saying, you know, versus, you know, us spinning our wheels here, having these discussions. I honest, you know, would like to move forward and have another workshop. We'll invite whoever needs to be here, you know, from the town planner to the, you know, building and zoning and, and all that other stuff. I mean, that, that just makes perfect sense. But, I mean, I personally am committed to the framework of, of this ordinance, working with it, going line by line, figuring out what should be in there, what should not be in there. I would kind of like, you know, maybe each, each counselor to, to address that, whether they, you know, see this as, as a fruitful effort, you know, something that we should be working towards. I mean, I think it's important to kind of state that now. I mean, just so, you know, the public has a sense that we are committed to, to doing this. So we're not wasting anyone's time. Bob Arvo, do you have any comment to that?
Yeah, I, I, I definitely agree with you. I think it is definitely worthwhile to go through this, um, to, to, you know, go through it line by line, you know, the meat of the, the proposal. You know, to the extent that we can, maybe we just separate the farm viability part of it. Leave that alone for now and just do the rest of it. Get that in, in place to, to where, you know, we are ready to vote on it. I think it's, it's definitely worthwhile to do. And sooner rather than later.
Excellent. Sharon, do you have any comments to that? Mike, would you, do you want to add something? Do you have a, a, any comment to, to what I said as far as this being a fruitful exercise? And something that has, you know, some, some bones to it?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Sharon.
Okay, I was talking, I, okay. I, I was going to tell you that before, when we went through the ordinance, we did it over multiple evenings. And so the 19th was just going to be the first of the hearing. You weren't going to make any decisions on the whole thing. You were going to go through it line by line and, and wherever you got to, you'd have to extend it and go forward again and, and, and have more me, you know, more of that. It's going to take more than one three hour meeting to go through this.
100%.
And I absolutely think that, um, it's, it's, it's an opportunity to, to improve the solar ordinance. And so I absolutely want to go forward.
Thank you, Sharon. I, I agree. Mike, did you want to add to that or?
No, I mean, I, I kind of concur with everybody. I think the Farm Viability Act should be pulled out of it just for the, for this, for the sake. It was kind of seems like it was just thrown in there at the last moment. I think I would be good to go forward with the rest of it, talk about it, discuss it. I do understand the thing about spinning wheels. I get that. But also too, I want everybody to be able to chime in on it. Like I had said, our solicitor, Al Diorio, maybe Ron Perowitz, I think is the chair alternate. You know, Sherri, building inspector, John Yurey, get them in there. Cause these are the guy, you know, it's, it's not just us. It's everybody in the loop.
I mean, on top of that, to add to that, I mean, they do know that we're having a work. I mean, I would hope that they know that we're having a workshop on this stuff, you know? So if, if, if any of you are in the audience and want to raise your hand and feel free to speak to it, have at it. I mean, I, I encourage it.
You know, I, I'm, I'm not going to, I wasn't going to talk anymore tonight, Scott Billhurst, but it's very important if you want the official position of anybody, whether it's the Conservation Commission or the Land Trust or the Planning Board. And planning boards in a different situation because they have a procedural role, but the zoning board or any other government entity, then you ask them for an official position, you know? You could have the chairman of a committee or a board commission. The board doesn't necessarily agree with the chairman. If you want the official position of the Conservation Commission, ask them for a recommendation as a body. And put it to a vote or any of the other boards, because that's how you really know the official position. Anybody can call in. I could speak anywhere and I don't speak for the Hopkinton Town Council because as far as other people, it might not agree with me. We might not have taken an official position on something. But when you have a vote and people put their names behind a vote, whatever position it is, that's what counts. And that's what we should be thinking about. And that's all I'm going to say tonight. I think I've talked too much already, probably. Hey, Council Gary, I think he's laughing, so.
Well, we've got one more here on the line, Scott, so you're going to have to hold on one second.
Council Moffett, Council Moffett, I think it's smiling too, so. Can't tell with all these masks on. Thank you.
364-9218, you have the floor, please.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Jim Lamb fear, town planner. I thought I heard a call for, uh, anyone who might be on the line to, uh, weigh in on it. So I just want to let you know that I was on board this evening for the entire meeting as I was on, uh, for December 14th. Very good discussion. Uh, I have to say, I'm pretty much, uh, in tune with what the predominant thinking is, uh, tonight. I think you're going in a, in the right direction. Again, as I've said before, we, we have a solar ordinance right now. It's serviceable. Could it be better? Yes. Is this a step in the right direction? Very well could be. The framework could be, uh, something upon which we can build upon. But again, as was expressed by Sharon and others, um, I think there is an awful lot of detail here that needs to be, um, explored, ju- just so that the council can, uh, understand exactly what it is, it's being put before it. And also that town staff, uh, planning department, building and zoning, that we understand how this ordinance is to work in practice. As far as, I, I'm not going to be judgmental as to, you know, should we be more restrictive, less restrictive, uh, or anything of the sort. I'm, I'm a town employee, uh, there to serve the town and I'm there to serve the town council. And whatever the council homework, uh, the council wants to give me, I'm willing to, uh, to do it. And eager to get into this. So I think, I think we're going in the right direction. But, uh, but I, I'll just say, just as, uh, one of the, one of the few things that really juts out at me, I don't have to go too far into this ordinance to see. And this is a major, major thing that we're going to have to think about is when you look at the district use table, which is one of the first things that I look to when anyone comes to my office for development, you're going to recognize what you see there being proposed. And virtually every single solar project is going to have to go to the zoning board. And virtually every single solar project is going to have to go to the zoning board for a special use permit. So a question I would put to the council is, is that something that you want to put the zoning board through? Is that necessary? And again, when I say every single project, I'm talking about residential projects. I, as I read this ordinance, if somebody wants to put, um, a residential, uh, solar array on their rooftop for their home, they gotta go to the zoning board for a special use permit. So is that something that you wanna do? Um, so think, you know, things of that nature, uh, I would, uh, take a look at, but I, I got quite a bit to point out to you folks, so you can understand what you're getting. And like I say, wh- when we get to the point that you're happy with something, you understand it, you're happy with it, that's the policy you wanna put in place? I'm fine with it. I, no problem for me. So which, but let's, let's be careful when we do this. We need to go through it line by line because the deeper you go into it, I can look at this at fifty thousand feet and, but the deeper you go layer to layer to layer, there's things that, that, you know, need to be looked at seriously. Um, and I, I just heard people say about taking the farm viability out of this. Well, if they're referring to the last couple of pages of this ordinance, that's fine. But the way it stands right now, uh, if, if a farmer wants to put a solar array on their farm, that is under the heading of accessory, uh, use. So again, they'd have to go to the zoning board. They can't put it, uh, uh, on the ground. It has to be either on a canopy. So you're telling a farmer they gotta put a canopy up over their farm and then put the solar? I mean, I, I don't know the difference between just putting, you know, posts in the ground. You gotta put posts in the ground for a canopy. So, I mean, these are the types of things that we have to look at. I'm not gonna say that this isn't a great, a great effort to improve our existing solar ordinance. I, I think it very well may, has, have some, uh, you know, good promise here. But I, I just think we have to look at the details of this and, uh, and work it over a little bit, so. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Jim. I appreciate your comments.
Okay.
All right. On that note, um, in the spirit of allowing more people to, um, have input and for us to kind of work through some of our things, I would like to ask the council if they, um, if they think that another workshop is in store or is due, or should we, you know, as, uh, Counselor, uh, Davis stated that, um, I mean, obviously this isn't gonna get worked through in, in a three hour meeting, you know, probably not a second three hour meeting, but maybe a third or a fourth meeting, so. Um, a- any guidance or, uh, recommendations on that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, I, Counselor Hurst, you know, in order to make this happen, I, I prefer us to, uh, if it's possible to determine Monday night at a regular council meeting when we're gonna have the workshop.
Okay.
The logic is that we can put feelers out for the fire department, the town planner and all these stakeholders. That's what they usually like to call people over the Sheriff's Stakeholders. And see when they can participate. So we don't have the situation that we have two or three people, but we'd like to have more people. Just find out the council president or the town clerk and ask these people, when are you free to participate so we can make this happen? Cause I hate to, us to set a meeting tonight uh, and, uh, not, and not have some people participate. So in the spirit of getting this done and people actually showing up and participating, it's being as efficient as possible. I, I suggest that we, uh, determine a date Monday night and the town clerk and the council president will fill out these people on their availabilities to participate in this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, much appreciated. Uh, I see Counselor Gary shaking his head that he thinks that's probably a good idea.
I concur with that. I think, I think if, you know, maybe just you or maybe Lisa sent out a journal email saying, you know, what we talked about, the, the departments and say, hey, we are looking for your in- input on this, cause this will directly affect you, especially zoning, if they happen to pick up something in the new ordinance, it'd be a good idea. Just reach out, say, you know, boom, sometimes a little bit of tender touch. Helps people, nice email saying, hey, we're looking for your input for this Monday night, maybe if we all get together and pick a date.
Sure. Hold on one second, Scott. I wanna allow this other, uh, yes, Sharon.
I'd like to ask Lisa a question, if I may.
All right, wait a minute, Scott. I would like for, I would like to suggest if you wanna have one more workshop where you have other people say stuff, then they, I, I think you only have the tenth. Or you just go ahead and just start the hearing. And in that hearing, you, you have, um, you ask the people to come to the hearing and, 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 and give their opinion. You know, of all these other departments and things that you want input, you want in- input from.
Sure.
I don't know that there's gonna be a difference between now and the third. That's, that's not gonna make much of a difference. Uh, and asking them when they're available. They need to be available on a Monday night. Cause that's when the town council meets.
Understood. Hold on one second.
Pardon?
Except for on the nineteenth, that's a Tuesday.
Right, okay. So I said the wrong date, but it, yeah, but I mean, there's only the tenth. We're gonna meet on the third. We already have that, uh, done, the agenda done. So we, you know, uh, we won't be discussing it on the third. Or, yeah, we won't be discussing it on the third. And, um, and then the next time, officially, we, we meet the first and third Mondays, but it's gonna be the, that Tuesday, the nineteenth. So either you have, you just tell them to come and participate on the nineteenth or you, or you do a special schedule on the tenth. I mean, I don't see waiting until Monday to make that decision. Doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that, that would be the eleventh of January.
Um, yeah, that's what I mean. That's what I mean.
All right, um, uh, Bob Marvel, do you, uh, have any input? I mean, now that I'm thinking about it, I mean, I, it would be great to, to, to organize all this, but if we set a date for the eleventh, I mean, that's two weeks from now. I mean, whether we decide next week to have it on the eleventh or whatever, I mean, if we're gonna have a workshop, we need to have it before the eighth hearing, you know, because a workshop is a less formal discussion. It's a, it's a Monday, Scott. The eleventh. And that way we can talk through this. It's less formal. There's less, you know, it's, it's, and that's what we need. We need that less formal discussion, you know, where we're not, you know, tied to certain things or, you know, we, we needed, you know, that's not on the agenda, you know, if we get off a tangent or something that, I mean, that's, that's gonna be an issue. The fourth, we have a regular scheduled meeting. Yep. We'll, we'll have to decide. Yep. Yep.
Yeah, but we gotta d- determine if you're gonna, if, then my, my issue.
Hold on, Lisa wants to talk real quick. Lisa, go ahead.
I just wanna, when, when you decide how you're going to move forward, I can, if, if you decide to have another workshop, say on the eleventh, I can certainly prepare a memorandum to all of those departments and, uh, interested parties and give them advance warning, attach all of the documentation to it and ask for their input. I mean, I can't guarantee that everybody can make it on such and such a date. I mean, people do have lives and sometimes they can't make it. But if you give them enough, um, leeway, like if I am able to get that out to them tomorrow, which is the twenty ninth, it'll give them two weeks almost to think about it, study it, review and hopefully have comments available and ready to provide to the council.
I agree. And, and if they can't comment in person, I, you know, more than happy to take any written comments, any written analysis or, or, or anything like that. So with that being said, Lisa, I would, I would like to move to, uh, to schedule another workshop for, uh, January eleventh. With.
Seven PM.
Seven PM, yep, with, uh, with everything that you stipulated there, sending out a memorandum, notifying and, and letting them know that we are, uh, requesting any, any input that they may have or any concerns.
Very good. Thank you.
Lisa, it's, it's Mike. Uh, I know we do it on the town website, Police Station, and where else do we put this up for public workshops?
Where, where do we place the, uh, agendas? They're posted in front of the town hall. They're posted at the police station. They're posted on the town's website and they're posted by law also on the Secretary of State's website.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, does anyone else have anything to add to this conversation? Before we adjourn.
Uh, this is Bob Marvel. I just wanted to, um, uh, reiterate, I, I, I agree that having another agenda, uh, or another workshop on the eleventh is, uh, a good idea. I think that we should be all doing our homework and taking a copy, you know, the latest copy of this draft that we have and ourselves going line by line and writing comments and potential changes that we'd like to see, so that when we come back to the workshop on the eleventh, we should be able to start going down line by line and making some, you know, modifications that we, you know, the council and the boards, um, would like to see. And then on the nineteenth, when we provide this to the public for comment, it's a, it's a pretty, you know, it's a more revised version of what the proposal is. I, I think that would be a good idea.
Sounds good, Bob. So, so my request to the rest of the council would be to to look at it and, and have ready, you know, your comments or concerns, what you don't like about it, what you do like about it, what you would not wanna see in it. That way, you know, we hit the ground running on the nineteenth and we just just keep the ball rolling and move forward. And, um, obviously, you know, if you reach out, let people know we're having a workshop, that reach out, let people know that we're having, having a meeting. Um, having been to the town council meetings the last two years, um, I mean, other than certain extraordinary circumstances or, or something, um, I mean, it, it's been crowded some days and it hasn't been crowded some other days, so. Um, and we haven't changed the way we've advertised meetings, you know what I mean? So it's, um, I mean, if anything, I think this, and this is my opinion, the virtual format has, you know, uh, increased the reach of these meetings, but, you know, if you have a computer, right? But I've seen many people that have cars and aren't here, you know what I mean? So.
I'm using my telephone. Everybody has a telephone.
Right. Exactly. True. Okay. All right. Uh, so, so without carrying on any, a- a- any further, um, I would like to, uh, say thank you to everyone who attended. All of your input is much appreciated. I would like to wish a happy new year to everyone. Stay safe, be healthy. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President, make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moffett, aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.